At 533, any agenda amendments?
I'd like to see if we could possibly talk about possible facility contract discussion, maybe an executive session.
Comments and correspondence. Hi, Brian. How are you?
Thank you.
Anything specific, or are you just here to?
I'm just following up on my same question I asked before.
About the sewer?
The sewer.
Have we heard back?
I have not heard back. But I have to write another, probably another letter to them about another topic, so I'll probably follow up with a conversation.
Because I went through the minutes on the slide board and there's no acknowledgement of it, so it's, you know, it's one of the things, it's just paperwork, so unless somebody goes, it's not going to happen. Because it doesn't get the dollars in the minutes, so whether they receive it, I can't tell you that, I don't know.
Right. Record as correspondence.
Well, I will follow up, because I'm going to have to follow up anyway, so I may as well about another, about Act 46 stuff that we're going to have to do in common, so I may as well follow up. And if I have to go, the difficulty about attending a meeting is that we have three to four board meetings and other meetings a week, so the likelihood that they're meeting when we're meeting somewhere is not good, but particularly if there is something that has to be done between the two boards around Act 46, somebody's probably going to want to go, so.
Yeah, we'll find out when they're actually meeting.
That might make sense.
One of us will. I feel like it's the same week we meet usually, but it's Wednesday or something.
Well, and, yeah, I don't have a website, so.
Right, it's hard to.
For an outsider.
So we'll find out when we meet.
Absolutely.
What's with Act 46, are you that coming up?
Yeah, that's going to, that's going to be a big conversation tonight, so stay tuned. To approval of the October 9th board meeting minutes, did everybody have a chance to review those? Were there any changes that needed to be made? No, thank you.
I will move to approve the October 9th minutes.
All those in favor of approving the October 9th meeting minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Here. Business report.
Good timing. Financial report, I don't, I didn't bring a financial report, we had one last month, I think. I did get tuition invoices, and they came in lower than what we thought, again, even though we had reduced a few students, so that's a good thing. But I'll bring a financial report next month. Warrants, our way here, and those are for the month of October. There were just the two that you had approved, well, one's for line of credit that we just pay every month, the interest on that, and then the other one was the electric bill that I have tabbed there, that you approved via email because of the timing, so if you can just sign that one, that would be good.
You want to motion for the home out right now? I'm going to make a motion to approve the warrant for the month of October in the amount of $471,631.71.
I will second that.
All those in favor of approving the warrants for the month of October, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
And then, I'm just handing out a paper copy of draft two of the fiscal year 20 budget as stands right now, if it's not merged, and you're part of Franklin Northwest. Basically, what has changed since the last draft, you'll notice in the variance column to the far right, I, in the instructional programs, the first line salaries for teachers, I have increased a position that was reduced last year, back to a full-time position at the request of the administration, just as a topic point, I guess, and just to see what the impact would be, and so in the variance column, that 14.6 is that, and we might need to continue that conversation in executive session. Other than that, it's really the assessments, and so draft one of the assessments went to the Franklin Northwest meetings, and so those drafts are reflected here. ECP on page two, early childhood program assessment, last time I had just kind of thrown in like a 2.5 percent, you know, kind of placeholder, and so this, these are the first drafts with salary and benefit increases, and ECP has a new, a new model, I don't know if Julie can speak more to that, or you hear more about that at Franklin Northwest, but I know their support staff model is changing slightly, and then the ending of the expansion grant, and then, of course, adjusting the assessment based on the students, but it's really that tuition as well, being kind of a shot in the dark, or a dart on a dartboard, or I don't know what other analogy to use.
We were just discussing today, in my meeting with Andrea, the fact that in time, when it'll be more stable, but right now, we're still having families discovering this process, so it's going up, and, you know, all of a sudden, and it's difficult to plan, it's one of the things we advocate for, because if a new provider opens up, gets approved, all of a sudden, we get billed, it doesn't matter if it's November and it's in the budget or not, so these.
And then there's issues too, with providers then becoming not eligible to receive the tuition, because a teacher maybe didn't remain certified, or, you know, so.
The oversight at the agencies is a challenge, but yes, it is, one of the things we discussed today is the long-term vision for pre-K, and, you know, right now, in this budget, is not reflected, we've reduced our all-day programming without the revenue, we're not keeping the same level of services, and so if we have, we're just working with the capacity we have, and without that, then we're subject to the fluctuation of tuition, just as you are for high school, so you're kind of forgetting it on both ends, really.
Is there data available to, like, even speculate on the number of eligible three- and four-year-olds, like, so I know when we look at kindergarten numbers, we look at our preschool numbers, is there any, I mean, is there data on two-year-olds, and who might be eligible when they turn three?
You know what's a better indicator, is you look at your first and second grade, three-year average, because that's, more kids are here by the time they're in first, second grade, and then if you take maybe three grades, and average the enrollment there, because in smaller schools, you have smaller classes and larger classes, but if you look at that kind of enrollment over time, that is more helpful, because people move in, and not all families use childcare, sometimes we have space in our classrooms, but it's just a 10-hour program, and families need full day, and maybe that full day is with a family member, and maybe it's with a childcare center, you know, so there are a lot of variables. I think we do better and better all the time at finding families, but I think it's going to be a little while before we're really stable with those numbers.
Read the town report from three years ago, see if it converts.
Hope they stay.
Judging by the board members, there's been a lot of.
Population of year in Franklin.
And then just on page five, you'll see the central office assessment, proposed in draft one to be up about $6,000, that's less than half a percent, in special ed, overall, you will notice, overall is actually down, but you'll notice that I've combined all the special ed assessments, so psychology and speech, truly, that's what we're, the assessment is meant to be, is we're netting out all the revenues received at the SU level, and that detail is kept there and reported there, and then you're just seeing a figure here, so it's not to say that I can't give it to you, or that we can't talk about it, or that we're not keeping the detail, but truly, we're trying to reflect it the way that we have to report it out to the state. Otherwise, it becomes a little hard to manage, and so I've consolidated those, but again, if you look at the variance column, you can see overall the impact there from your last Other than that, transportation, last time, on the last page seven, your transportation assessment, which again is an SU contract, but you do just pay Sheldon's portion of that as it was bid, I had neglected to remember that Sheldon was the one that had a significantly higher increase than the other schools from year to year, and so I've adjusted for that, keeping in mind that the revenue has been net from that figure too, so helping the bottom line of your budget as far as increase, but when we start talking tax rate, we'll start to, we'll see the impact of that loss of revenue on that side, so it's really a wash from one place to the other, but, so right now, draft two is looking at 1.5, 1.56%. We did go to, Becky and I attended a VASBO meeting on Friday, the state pretty much announced that they will be late getting out equalized pupil numbers, tax rates, yields, so we don't anticipate it early and wait for it, and it'll come when it comes, sort of a thing, so we may have, you know, a bit of a push at the end of the year, whether Act 46, no Act 46, all the schools in the state, I think, will be in the same position, that some of those projections that we try to do, we'll do the best we can with the information we have at the time.
That's about it for draft two. Any questions? All right, just move on to old business.
Can I actually ask one clarifying question, and I don't know if this is really budget, or if this is more Act 46, but Morgan Daybell has asked that I share some things with him, and I just wanted to make sure that that was, he's the business manager for Franklin Northeast, as far as budgeting and transportation assessments and those sorts of things, I think he's trying to wrap his head around what's going on as well, or maybe going on, so I did just want to confirm that that's at least understood by the board, I don't know if I need permission per se.
I mean, I think it's in our best interest if that's where we are going to end up, to have the information they need.
So I will answer those questions, if there's anything out of the ordinary, of course, I would ask you.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is just preliminary stuff, October 1 numbers, transportation costs, how you, your food service program, things like that.
Sorry, the food services, I mean, we think, so I know that they do, in Franklin Northwest, they do, each school has.
In-house programs.
And since we have the abbey, does that mean anything, any extra staff or are somebody to administer during that program? You should find out foods. But we have the abbey, so.
You have a food service management company, they don't, they in-house program.
It's just a supplier.
Yeah.
Like, each individual school has their own coach, and I think they have somebody at the SU level who oversees it.
We do, for the whole SU, so all the schools, yeah. Morgan has asked about that, I think it's going to be, he's never had a food service management company, and so if he chose to continue, of course, they're only one-year contracts, but if Sheldon chose to continue with that, I think there'd be a little bit of a learning curve, but I don't think for one school, it would be unrealistic for them to manage, especially since you're established right now, and you're running a good program, and it's cash flowing, and there's good participation, and.
And it's a one-year contract, so they're not.
Okay. All right, thank you. So Act 46 updates, where do we start?
I just threw up something, I know you're all aware of, your phone call with Dan French, you're all aware of the October 29th State Board of Education meeting, but the community isn't necessarily, so.
Yeah, so maybe we'll start there, with some updates. So at the October 29th State Board meeting, the State Board of Education made the recommend, or the preliminary recommendation that Sheldon be moved to Franklin Northeast, which will be called the Northern Mountain Valley District, so NMB. They cited a couple of different reasons, one being that it would, pulling Sheldon from Franklin Northwest would make Franklin Northwest a preferred structure, which was a priority for them, so it sort of righted Franklin Northwest. They cited the fact that, in the secretary's report, she stated that 40% of Sheldon students attended Ennisburg, and so that would create some continuity. The schools that will make up the Northern Mountain Valley District are all choice schools, so we would have similar governance structures. I think that, I don't know if anybody else got a chance to read the minutes, but that seemed to be the big pieces for them. So the following day, we had a phone call with Secretary French, just to sort of reiterate our concerns, hopefully advocate for our position, that it's not just simply a change in governance, and that there are a lot of unanswered questions for this board and for Sheldon staff, specifically our supervisor union level employees. He supported the state board's recommendation for a lot of the same reasons, and implied that it was just a shift in governance, which I would disagree with, I think it's going to be a big shift, better or worse, it is a big shift. So he offered that he would like to see the state support, specifically Sheldon, but I think in general, schools that are going to have to merge, but it wasn't clear what that support would look like. So he did offer to come up and meet with us in person, if we'd like to do that, that might be something we talk about tonight or in the future. And he didn't have, there wasn't much clarity around our SU level staff, so I don't think that the state has a very solid plan, and I don't know what the structure of the other schools that are being merged is, but I would guess that Sheldon is unique in sort of what is going to happen to us if the plan goes through of having to move us, because I don't know, there are a lot of other schools that are going through that, which might be why they don't have a plan, so.
You know, he did say to superintendents near the end of October, that their first focus is to get this report written and work with the state board, but then they want to be looking at the districts like the districts in the MBU Unified High School District, and those, you know, the support needed to merge there, the steps, and then the sort of other categories, and, you know, there must be some school districts that are joining existing districts, the way that you are, but that's really a minority, so, and each question is a little bit unique, so he wants to make sure that there is the technical support, I know the superintendent's association, probably the school board's association too, are thinking about how they can support our schools through these, not giving us legal advice, but the tips, what are the things that you need to consider, the technical assistance, I think is very important. So I do appreciate the fact that he is a secretary of education who has had to go through mergers, so he knows a little bit about it and the headaches of it, so rather than somebody who just says, yes, you're going to do it, and they haven't gone through it, but I do think that there's concern both in the secretary's office and from the video of the state board meeting around the timeline, so I don't know what that will mean.
So I have also, so I attended an NMB meeting last night, and I attended one last month as well, so they are doing their preliminary planning, we have had some questions come up. I can't have a note pad. So because we're joining an existing district, it's a little different than what the MBU district will go through, because they're creating a new district, so our select, so I think initially what we had thought was that the board chair and the board clerk would go as a transitional board to the NMB meetings until the new board was elected, but it sounds like that is not the case, and it will be two appointees for the select board, the select board will appoint two people.
Well, there are a variety of rules, none of which is clear, you have to look at circumstances and pull it together, certainly the select board should be involved, I think the safest thing in both reviewing the information Donna Russo Savage sent to me, which was clear as mud, but I did review it carefully, and then I spoke with Pietro, our attorney, and he said, cleanest thing to do is have the board, the select board, with the input of this board, make a motion appointing whoever we want it to be, and I, because I completely feel they're not going to say, well, no, we want these two other people, you know, I think they're going to support what we would like to do, and then this board make a motion, so if both boards make motions appointing the two people, that makes it really clear, and then nobody can argue with it. I mean, people could argue, but I think we're covered.
Yeah, so my question, I guess, is about timeline, so the, and I'm not going to call it transition, because I know that that is a term specific to a newly merged district, and since we are joining an already merged district, it's confusing, but temporary?
Yes.
Is that more appropriate?
Because the other alternative is that if there are vacancies on a board, but it's not, there are no vacancies on that board until it is established.
Right.
So.
So these two temporary people would be appointed as of the final recommendation, so let's use December 1st, you know, they do the 28th, which is what people are saying, so December 1st, these two people would start going to the NMB meetings, as members of that board, or would that not be until?
The board, they, there are a couple things you can do, that board has had their members voted upon already, so they could appoint people as to vacancies, but those vacancies won't exist until July 1st, so it really is a temporary, sort of non-voting situation.
So these two people will be appointed until June 30th, or July 1st, or would they be appointed until town meeting day?
Town meeting.
At which point, the electorate of all four towns would vote on the two Sheldon?
Whatever their articles of agreement would say.
I think it's two, two, I think it's equal at large voting, so we'd have two temporary people until town meeting day. The Sheldon board would continue until?
June 30th.
June 30th. So does that hypothetically then, is at town meeting day, so my term is up?
Yes.
So the town will be voting in somebody for the duration of town meeting to July 1st?
No.
No?
Well, that is one way you can do it.
Okay.
But it's confusing. So I recall going through this in Maple Run, when we were Franklin Central, but of course, those communities voted, and when they did vote, and then they had an organizational meeting, they voted for their transition board, and at the organizational meetings, they were able to, through, I'm sorry, I can't quote what provision in the statute, but they were able to say, Julia, your term will be running until June 30th, because this board will not exist.
Okay.
So there was plenty of time to do that, but that is not necessarily how things, it's not the cleanest thing, because we didn't have an election, right?
Right.
So you could vote for, have people voting for two people to go to Northern Mountain Valley, and then some, Julia, for three months in Sheldon, but I think the voters are going to be confused enough, I guess, it's just not really fair.
I'm confused.
I wouldn't know what to do with that if I wasn't in this process, so the cleanest thing to do, you two folks will still be on the board, and be the majority, there's a vacancy, you have the authority to appoint for the vacancy, you can appoint Julia.
I see, okay.
And her term would expire June 30th. That's probably the easiest way for all of the, because I'm not sure that I feel as comfortable with the, let's just announce that people's terms are going to run, because I think we should have done that a year ago, if we knew that this was happening.
Right.
It's not fair to do it at your organizational meeting in March, you know, I see your organizational meeting in March will have Sean and Emily appointing you for the duration of this whole year.
Right, because we vote from the floor for, currently, we vote for school board members from the floor, but the two Sheldon members on NMB will be voted Australian ballot, right, because it's all of the towns are voting.
Right, and I think that this is where we really start to talk about what's their work to figure out, and we need to make sure we're on the same page, we've started having meetings with them. I'm trying to be really careful to make sure that when we call attorneys about what we should be doing and advising you all, but I also don't want to pay their legal bills for them, and so it's kind of a, I think they need to tell us what the process is per their Articles of Agreement, and get legal advice about how we address the voting from the floor and Australian ballot method. I can think off the top of my head, from research we've been doing, about a variety ways of doing that, but really, that's for that organization to determine how they want to handle it, because there are. You might vote, you can't vote by Australian ballot until the electorate of Sheldon votes that it's okay to vote by Australian ballot and on particular matters, but you won't be part of that organization yet.
Right.
Yeah, it's, well, the issue with this is, because it was, this was thrown on us versus pre-planning.
Correct.
Where, you know, like you said, a year ago, we could have known this was coming, because they, not, I mean, they have to, we don't know how their other towns vote for their board members, because they have to educate all of the, because, I mean, they have to do the same thing with all their towns.
So they voted to merge, so they voted on Articles of Agreement, so they've agreed to do certain things, but.
Except for Montgomery, they're in the same vote that we're.
Except for Montgomery, they're in the same vote that we're in.
Half of the communities are going to be coming into the same.
Yeah, so they need to determine how they're going to address the election of board members, and there are multiple ways that you can do it, through different avenues of the law, that's probably why they're talking about having the select board involved in appointing, so I'm going to want to find out how long that appointment should be, is it just until town meeting, or is it an appointment for the next school year? I don't know, that may be why they're asking for the select board to do it.
Well, and what they had said last night at the NMB meeting was that their hope would be that the temporary board members, or the temporary people who are appointed, would also run for those seats.
Okay.
Morgan had said that to us, too, is they're not starting with you.
Right, which absolutely makes sense for appropriate transition, so if they're going to run, how are, how are we doing that?
Because those, because that new board will be the board that will vote on the work the temporary board did, and so if they're new people, and they didn't do that work, then they.
It could delay everything.
Number one, they may not understand it, and two, they may decide they don't agree with it.
What if somebody else runs against you? Just a couple or a whole, that's all it takes.
You mean at town meeting?
Right.
You're right.
So there's no.
There's no guarantee that those temporary people would be on the board.
Right.
Yep.
Because the majority of people vote anybody off the floor.
Exactly.
Because that's how it works at town meeting.
Right. So.
So that was one.
I had a question going back. I, I had a, a question going back for a second. So the, the two temporary members from this board, even though the N M V board, half of that board has already been established.
Yeah.
Are we voting, we're voting members on that board as temporary members? Or not yet because we're not officially?
The phrase that they used last night was, we want to start our work together. So I would assume, I don't know, I can't, I can't even.
Okay, I, I was just wondering, right.
Because, because I guess in my mind, the new N M V board of the four, comprised of the four towns doesn't start until July 1st, in my mind. And I don't, maybe that's wrong. But, so there was some confusion around, like when the, the state board puts the plan in place as to whether that's the starting point or whether July 1st is the starting point. In terms of, there are some other questions that we'll get to.
Right.
But the effect that, that that finalization of the plan has on new boards, if that makes sense.
And, and, I mean, the question, it's just, I guess there's two parts. I mean, you get into the legally, would, as a temporary board member, would we have the right to vote? You would think they'd want our input because if they don't take it, they make everything. And then it comes July 1st when we have to vote on it. And we didn't have a say or we didn't like it. We could just vote it down. But it just, it leads to all these, because there's a lot of things we thought would work one way.
Yeah.
You're not sure. And so you get into this, you'd like to think everyone's going to be working for best interests of their current involved, but you just never know how these things work. So.
I'm reading while you're talking. I apologize. To see if that was, if the question about the temporary portion, because it's very clear that they have a hybrid model, that Sheldon and Montgomery are being, you know, are being required provisionally to merge. Then you'll be allotted two seats to be elected by the entire Northern Mountain Valley electorate at an annual or special meeting called for that purpose, so probably town meeting. And then there's a lot, the statute doesn't clearly address how to fill a vacancy when the board is elected per the hybrid model. So, and it's not a vacancy, well, it is a vacancy now because they're an existing district, but it's not really a vacancy because not yet, but first. That's where we keep doing this circularity. So I think that the reality is, now, they're, they're not an act, they're in the transitional period, right? They're not running the school district yet. Do they still have their local districts?
I know they still have local board meetings.
They still have local board meetings, okay. So that was, I'm correcting my assumption. That was nice. So they're right now being a transitional board.
Okay, so they're acting as that.
So they're act, they're, they were voted in to be the transition board and conduct the work. They're not live yet either.
Okay.
They're still transitioning. So if, what we're essentially doing is asking the select board and this board to agree on who will fill the two slots in the transitional board that they are allotting you because you're being merged and being told to transition with them. So it's sort of like late entry into an existing board.
Yeah. And so Montgomery, we get the same?
Two slots, yes. And so there is nothing to cover it because all of the exceptions in the law that were written in were around districts like M V U.
So, clear?
Yeah.
The next question that came up is the bond that we've been working on. So there has been some confusion, and I think that we, we're all fortunate, us and N M V, in that we have the same legal counsel. So that makes answer, should make answers very clear moving forward, hopefully.
This was clear.
So there was a question that.
What question you asked?
N M V was not sure that if we pass a bond on town meeting day, that bond would transition to N M V. So what that means is that their understanding was that Sheldon would retain the bond debt, assume, this is assuming it passes, that Sheldon would retain the bond debt, but Sheldon would move to N M V and be managed by the N M V board. So the property would move to N M V, but the, the debt would stay with Sheldon specifically.
Now, our attorneys said that that's not true at all. That's a misunderstanding. That advice probably came from someone at the agency of ed and probably had something to do with something else.
Okay.
And then that sort of became generalized. I don't know, not the other person. But you, there is absolutely, in our legal counsel's mind, I'm sure there's another lawyer out there somewhere who might disagree, that there is absolutely nothing, you have complete authority to go to bond or to have a special article, and that at the time that the merger occurs, all debt and property is shared with the new organization.
I like that that answer is very clear.
Well, we asked it six different ways and six different times, just to make sure.
We had the conversation twice, yeah. So, because we had the conversation immediately after our meeting with the business manager and superintendent where that came up. And Laura and I just sort of said, really? Okay. So I said that. And, and I have not discussed it, discussed it with the superintendent since then. And so then I called our attorney this morning after receiving your email and went through your questions and this as well, again, just to make extra sure.
Yeah. Because I, I think that that is important because it may or may not inform our bond decisions when we vote. I think we all agree that it's needed, but if that's going to leave Sheldon with a huge, right? With a, a higher debt than the rest of the district, that might be something we think about, but.
Well, and it is something to consider, obviously. They're, they're not excited about it.
Sure.
I mean, you know, and Sheldon has work that needs to be done. So there are political considerations all around.
And I, I, I can see their perspective, but this is not an out of the blue bond. This is something that's been in development for the three years that I've been on the board. And I think the year before I came on is when they did the facilities audit. So it just has not been an opportune time tax-wise. But I think the farther we move away, the, in time, the farther we move away from when that facility's assessment was done, the, the more that's going to change and the more that might need immediate attention. So that information sort of becomes stale and we may end up in a place where we don't really know what needs to be done because it's all changed, so. Okay.
I got a question.
Yeah?
In the past, we bonded, we were the beneficiary or whatever of the whole bond. Nobody else was. But now, we're saying it's going to get passed on, but it could work on the outside of coin too. They could go for a thing and we'd be paying for theirs.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. So one of the schools in that district, Burtshire, already has a bond that they've done. It's, it was three years ago, I think, that they did that. So that will, will still pass to the, the newly formed district.
Truly, it's statewide, too, has some impact. So if, if 15 schools that are being merged decide to do that and the ed fund needs to then raise that much, it actually does kind of go to everyone a little bit.
Yeah.
It's not dollar for dollar, but there's a whole calculation and the money has to be raised statewide.
Right.
The next one was around negotiations. And we are doing a negotiations update, I assume in executive session, because of premature knowledge, putting the board at a disadvantage. But the question was, they, they were wanting Sheldon to negotiate now with their organization, which Pietro agrees with me. I love it when the lawyer agrees. I feel so, like, my mom was right, I should have just gone to law school. But I, right now, we're negotiating and entering into negotiations with our organizations. We have an association that covers all of the school districts within Franklin Northwest. That's the body that exists, just as school districts organize. I'm sure you remember when this Fairfield Association and the B F A Association, they all merged, they created a new association. That's a process that the Vermont NEA goes through. There is no body that Sheldon, teachers belong to, to actually negotiate with until potentially July 1st. So.
They don't have their own.
They don't, they may now.
Sheldon has one in Franklin Northwest, not individually, is what you're saying.
But Northern Valley probably has an association or people that are, are negotiating on behalf of the newly merged organization. That's, but Sheldon isn't a part of that yet. That doesn't mean they couldn't be, but that's something for the teachers to do. We have our own process.
Yeah.
We really don't have, it's different, it's, it is different because in, in towns that merged voluntarily, part of the charge for that elected transition board is to conduct negotiations as well as build a budget. So, and we're not in that mix yet. So it's similar to the board appointment piece. This is an area of Act 46 that was unanticipated. There's not a ton of provision for this. It makes the most sense to, the, the, the teachers in Sheldon should, Sheldon merge are able to bring their master agreement with them and then conduct negotiations. Or be, they either keep their master agreement or they negotiate again, or they, the two parties agree what they want to do. And the teachers here could say, wow, this looks great. Let's, let's do that. Or they, everybody has a one-year agreement. So then they may just have this existing contract when we're finished and bring that with them for a year and then meanwhile negotiate for the next.
Yeah. The concern that I brought up last night, they, they have seen our master agreement and are using it in their negotiations. But my, so they've appointed two people from the N M V board to do negotiations within their S U. But of course Sheldon is not part of that board yet and, and so that was worrisome to me because we're not a part of, you know, like, if our teachers aren't going to get to keep the contract that we negotiate with Franklin Northwest, but we're not a part of the negotiations in Franklin Northeast or N M V because we're not a part of it yet, it just felt like we're sort of hoping that, that it will be what's best for Sheldon teachers. And I, and I realize that once we're merged, it's, you're all together and you're going to negotiate together and you're going to function together. But because we're in that sort of like transition time where we're still in Franklin Northwest, I just.
Right.
I, that worried me.
One of the things that's important to note is that Suzanne Durne, Durne Meyer, who is the Vermont NEA representative, new served director for this region, she's reached out to me, to Lynn Cota, talked about, I mean, the teachers want to hear from her as well. That, I think that some of the logistics there could likely be worked out around what makes sense. And of course, our own negotiations update would be part of that scenario. But I, I think that probably our negotiations could, once they're completed, could inform theirs. That doesn't mean that input couldn't be part of what the negotiations is there. I think if everyone's talking to one another, we, we want to make it as smooth as possible.
Do you guys have any questions? That had come up?
We have answers to the same stuff that you just went over.
Yeah.
I do have, it's some information on the S U employees.
Okay.
Too. We could, and again, first you want to have conversations with the other organization. First you want to be sure this is what's going to happen. We haven't talked about the lawsuit yet, you know, all of those things. We could have a side letter, the board could have a side letter. If all the teachers want to go and stay in Sheldon, we could have a side letter saying that the S U employees will merge, and, and I'm not pretending to know exactly the language, but that would be the gist of it. That the S U employees would go, would stay with Sheldon School in the new school district. And we would have some sort of side letter around, to that effect. We could also have one that says that they have an option, right? Obviously Franklin Northeast doesn't want a school with no special educators in it. That's not a good way for our children to start the school year off. Likely many teachers will want to stay because they love the school they teach at. We could also do nothing. And then S U employees would have the opportunity to bump or take positions that are vacant through attrition in the Franklin Northwest. And if they wanted to stay in Sheldon, they probably would have to do a very abbreviated kind of application. I don't know what that would, you know, so we'd want people to keep their seniority. We would want people to, so I'm sure that we would do something through a side letter process. I'd rather not do nothing.
Right. Yeah, and I, I want.
They would rather you not do nothing.
Yeah.
Yes, I'm sure.
I, I want to make sure our staff have as much information as possible and that they're not, I don't want them to feel like they have to officially quit Franklin Northwest, apply to Franklin Northeast or N M V with no, you know, sort of legal guarantee that they can keep their seniority.
Where it's a bridge.
Exactly, exactly. And so I think it's going to be, it's going to be a lot going on for staff.
And that's the sort of thing that.
If we can alleviate it.
The two districts are going to need to speak.
Yeah.
Very carefully about how to craft that kind of language. Do they agree with that? Is that the process they want to have? I mean, it's complex enough when a single S U is merging and you have to figure out what works for our organization. It's multiplied geometrically.
Have they, because I know not all places that, are there, do they have their special educators, are they S U employees there? Are they to the school there?
Yeah, yeah. The professionals are, there's a first time it's not, just like we are.
So we've spoken, and, and you were at that meeting, it was a positive meeting. We've spoken broadly and conceptually about, except for, you know, the bond fishing. But for the most part, it was, of course, we want to have your teachers and of course we want your children to have that continuity and those kinds of things, but not how are we going to do it? That would be the next step. Now making more notes.
We also haven't, in, in the same vein, the paraprofessional contracts. We haven't really talked about those either, so.
Right.
I, if I remember correctly from last night, I think some of their pairs are on a contract and others are not. Like one school is and one school's not. And so they're trying to work that out, too. We're making that transition to have everybody on.
In our meeting, we did, do you want to talk a little bit about the meeting with Lynn Cota and Morgan?
We began the meeting just, Lynn asked about Sheldon, you know, what kinds of things are we working on? What makes Sheldon Sheldon? What's important to us? We, you know, we got as detailed as, you know, talking about what, what programs we use or what kind of philosophies we follow in terms of, you know, teaching math literacy. And then as broadly as, you know, what are some of our goals? And we talked about small details that have a probably big impact on people like our Google domain and our email and Google Drive and all of those pieces. And how, because those are all F N W S U accounts. And how does that, how will that merge? In terms of you can't just change the name on it and have it all go with you. And then the, you know, special ed program, I don't know, the student information management.
Right.
Tool, is that what it's called? I'm not sure.
Goalview versus DocuSpend.
They use DocuSpend, you know, so how, so there's, there would have to be a transition, all of those I E Ps to a new, new. You know, and as we update, those are updated yearly. So as, as they're updated, at what point in the year would we start? Would we maybe have two programs? And so we start updating them in DocuSpend as opposed to Goalview and then doing them over again in the summer? Or like, we're, we're not quite sure how those kinds of things work. You know, so we, we did, did a lot of trying to getting to know one another, but then also, oh yeah, you know, we're kind of wondering about this, oh yeah. And so it was, it was a lot of back and forth. I thought that, that Ms. Cota did a really nice job just saying, we, we aren't asking Sheldon to be a different school. Right? You, you have a school and you run it a certain way. That is, there is no obligation, right? As soon as the, you know, as soon as we sign on the dotted line or however you want to call it, to suddenly operate differently. Certainly will there be conversations in the future about changing things, of course. But there's, there's, there was no. There was, it, it wasn't, it was not conveyed in a way that said, you're going to have to do something this way because you are in this particular S U. For instance, she said that, you know, we talked about reading workshop and using Lucy Calkins' units of study. And she said that three of the elementary schools use that and two don't. So she said, you know, there's an example within their own, you know, current S U. Not everyone's doing exactly the same thing. So there wouldn't necessarily be a requirement that we do exactly the same thing that, that other schools have been doing because they don't do exactly the same thing. So then, you know, that made me probably wonder more about what their curriculum looks like, what their, what their work has been in that area. Because, because at Franklin Northwest, we have been very, very intentional about trying to be on the same page with many of those, those things. And so that may not, not be the work that they've done yet. And maybe they will, or maybe they won't, you know. She didn't necessarily comment either way. So there, so there were some things that, you know, there were some things that made, that at least made me go, oh yeah, Gmail. Right?
That would be a piece of work.
Right? And that was caused, you know, a little bit of worry. But then there were some things that I was like, okay, I, you know, that's, that, that may be a conversation for in the future, but not, not very soon in the future. Like I think there's a lot of other work to do. And some of the things I think that we worried about a little bit is probably not the, the urgent work. You know, so in terms of curriculum, for instance.
Did you guys talk at all about pre-K? That was one of my, like I realized the other night that we have a collaborative with Maple Run right now. And that would have to shift. And that was one of those like, oh no, I hadn't thought about that.
So that's actually, we collaborate with, but we don't have that same relationship with Maple Run that we used to.
Right. But I think that their pre-K is run individually by the schools.
Okay.
Versus having like Andrea, who administers, I think.
Yeah, we did not talk about pre-K.
Nope, putting it on the list.
And we, and we just barely talked about after-school programming. But both, both S U's are rewriting that grant. And so, yeah. Yeah, so they, they will, they will write Sheldon in.
One of the things that came out of that meeting is that the superintendent would like to know at what point, if at all, you would like her to come to a board meeting here and maybe answer some of your questions directly. I know that you're going to meetings, but that, that might be. And, and then at what point, and again, I think as you get closer to something happening, then coming to the school, those kinds of things. So maybe a first step would be coming to a, a future board meeting. And I don't know whether you want that to be December or whether you want that to be January. Or what you want.
Because I don't have a preference one way or the other.
Are we going to have anything more figured out by January than we do December?
I think the only thing.
I hope so too, but yes, I, I.
I think the, the only thing that January might offer is that it's farther out from when the state board will make their final. Like if she comes in December, that will be very closely after, certainly after when they make their decision. So January might give everybody a chance to digest, even though it's likely we know what their decision will be.
And we'll have more of an idea if there's an injunction or there is an injunction. And we're, you know, all right, so I'll reach out and, I mean, I'm not going to wait until January. But I mean, I'm talking to her tomorrow afternoon, actually. But we'll talk about that as a possibility. And of course, she currently has nine school boards. So the likelihood that she'll, you know, there'll be a little scheduling.
Yeah.
But she'll, she wants to make sure she prioritizes it when it makes sense for us.
Are you ready to move on to the lawsuit update?
Yes.
So have you both been added to the group?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
The secret group that you belong to.
So that, I hope gives you a little bit more background. It's given me a little bit more, I guess. But one of the pieces, so Julie filled this out for us and printed it off, is that we, if we wish to continue as a party, we'll have to sign, you know, sign this letter of understanding and engagement. We also, they're also asking for like appoint person from each board, who that they can communicate with. I, so I, I think we should appoint somebody. I'm going to suggest it not be me, since I'm going to the N M V meetings and I'm doing negotiations. I'm, one, I'm worried I'm going to miss an email because there's a lot that comes from that group. But two, it might just have, be better to have somebody who has that be their focus. But I guess we need to decide first, is this something that we want to continue being a party to?
What we did do is Highgate had this discussion. Because like you, they were sort of, let's put my toe in and see what the information is and find out how much it would cost and those kinds of questions. And then we got information to make sure that there was a board motion. And so we did another motion just so that it was tied to this letter and that it, in case anybody, I think these kinds of motions could get scrutiny later on. So we, it made sense to make sure that we were very clear. So I just wanted to throw that out too.
And did Highgate decide to get?
They did do it. And I copied down the motion that we made at that board meeting in, in case you make that decision too.
What, what is the cost of that?
So they have set up a fund. So there is no, at this point, they're saying there's, there will be no cost to the schools that are participating or anybody that are participating because you, you could participate as an individual if you wanted to. So they, the attorneys that are working on it, most of them, I believe, are doing it through a charge. And there are some others that are charging at a small fee. But they've set up a fund that people can donate to. And that will go towards like filing fees or the attorney's fees.
Is the school funding it or is the school not funding it?
No.
Just individuals?
It's anybody who'd like to donate. So the school will not be donating, but I think they're calling for like Brian Derry to make a donation. You know what I mean? So there's a GoFundMe page with that.
Finding it here on this website that I, no, it's terrible. I have.
No, I meant Julie Rivers, Franklin Northwest, the great person.
I need to go. The way Facebook posts things on a page like this is that even when I post something, here it is, it's farther down. And I've tried to move it around, I do not have the ability to do it, I'm sure of it. So on the Franklin Northwest S U website, under posts, there is this link for the Alliance of Vermont School Board Members. And there's a donate now button. So people, it goes right to a GoFundMe page. And it is a way for private citizens in organizations that are not school boards, because no school district money should be going toward this, will be able to raise money. Now, the understanding is that the lead attorney, David Kelly, is going to work completely pro bono. And some of the others will mostly be pro bono. But if it gets over, I think they said five hours a week, then they would be looking to be compensated at a rate. And that's what this GoFundMe page is trying to do. And this letter specifically states that no individual school board or select board is asked to guarantee that any part of these bills get paid. So we are not signing anything that commits any funds at all. And that was a very important tip, board.
What did the lawyers say with odds were that were, to win or lose?
I don't think they've said. I think their first step is to seek an injunction. So they're looking for a judge to say that all of the forced mergers be paused until they can figure out some of the details of the case. So that's their first step. And then they'd go from there. But I don't, I don't think they've said one way or the other. They have quite a few different arguments that sort of go at the different pieces of Act forty-six that they see that are problematic.
So how does that correspond with the town meeting table?
So if there's an injunction, it, it sort of depends on how long the injunction is granted for. So how long the judge says we're going to pause this. And that will sort of inform what happens at town meeting. That's mine.
That's what's particularly difficult.
Yeah.
Because if, if that S U meeting did a timeline, if there's no lawsuit, no injunction, how, all the work that has to happen for, well, really both districts to form. But with an injunction, it would mean we couldn't organize, couldn't form a new board, we couldn't do anything. Just wait. And obviously that would mean you do business as usual with a Sheldon School Board until a lawsuit is either, a decision is made in favor or against. So in terms of, I, I don't know. Obviously, this group of attorneys feels that they are, that they have a good case or they wouldn't be proceeding.
Another part on top of this is through the emails, trying to get the legislature in January to postpone all of those Act forty-six dates to give us more time to work. Hoping that may happen also.
Yeah, that's one of the, I would think if there's an injunction granted and it's now the end of January, the legislature is going to have to do something because we cannot proceed in more meetings and, and have budgets and so forth without them at least giving a year for the implementation. So that would be helpful. And then of course, some folks are going to advocate to their legislatures very strongly that they overturn or amend or change Act forty-six and Act forty-nine. So I think the odds on a postponement are better than the odds on an overturning. But we just had an election, so who knows what, you know, what people say versus what they really would do. And, and you have to look at the whole House and Senate as a whole. But certainly our local candidates were pretty strongly against Act forty-six and wanted to speak to at least amending.
So I guess myself personally, in terms of the lawsuit and whether we continue, I think the way I look at it is because we're not being asked to commit any funding for it, for me, it comes down to what is moving forward mean for Sheldon with Act forty-six? And I think that we have been in agreement that it's not what is best for us at this point to be moved out of Franklin Northwest. And so I would be in favor of, of staying on with the lawsuit for the fact that, that I don't think that moving, I don't think moving Sheldon out of Franklin Northwest was a thoughtful decision. Because I think there's a lot of unknowns that have not been answered for us. And so on that, for the principle of the fact that nobody was thinking about Sheldon when they made the decision, in my opinion, I, I would like to stick with it. But that's my own two cents.
I agree with you.
Yeah, I mean, I, the, yeah, the feeling I got from the state board's decision in talking with the secretary, it was more of you're getting moved for, so Franklin Northwest can work better.
More step for two by threes kind of thing.
It was more of, well, you guys were, you guys were just in the wrong spot and because we didn't want, and then the whole part of we didn't, as Franklin Northwest decide on a three by one, then that's not an option anymore.
Right, right.
There's no flexibility.
Which was in fact questioned at the state board meeting. Like that was something that they asked and the answer was that it wasn't within their purview. But the fact that that's what they were thinking would be, some people thought that that might be more effective.
Let me acknowledge that works well for, you know, Franklin Northwest, not so much for you. We actually said that, so I was like. So I was like, okay, so you're acknowledging this isn't what's best for us. So I'm all in favor of staying on.
It's also important to note that the lawsuit is out there, right? Whether you sign on or not, Montgomery signed on. And so, and even if one school district in the whole state, of course, it probably wouldn't have the legs if only one school district signed, tried to sue the state. But the fact that they have a number of school districts have signed, an injunction will likely stop all merger activity. It certainly would stop all merger activity where at least one plaintiff is involved in a lawsuit, um in the lawsuit. So um keeping on isn't in any ways preventing us from moving forward. The lawsuit itself is potentially stopping everyone from moving forward. So you're not doing a disservice to your teachers because other folks that have joined this lawsuit throughout the whole state would impact Sheldon and its ability to merge. So at least you are saying that you're fighting for the governance of your school. Uh and I think it, you continue to be in the know with your lots of emails. Um and uh potentially have an opportunity to um, I don't know, shift the landscape of this this law a little bit. So if you want to, do you want me to read the motion?
Sure.
You're also subdued tonight.
I wonder why, lots to think about.
What would be, before we?
Yes, absolutely.
What would be our responsibilities within this?
So um he, David Kelly had sent um like a questionnaire um where he needed some information about um our situation in particular. And I think that they're gonna use everybody's responses to that questionnaire to inform maybe some of their arguments. So my understanding is it's um, you know, giving information when they need it, staying up to date on the the progress of the case. They they did make a specific group for members of this. So the one, the group that we get a lot of emails from is not the group that um is specific to this. That's just a general Act forty-six group.
Thinking about signing up to be the rep?
Or not signing up.
I would sign up if life circumstances were different. I would be all for it. I just don't know if I'm gonna have the the time to commit presently. I don't know.
The only thing thus far that we've had to, that I've had to do outside of just just the entertainment of emails is um just that questionnaire, which was, ended up, it was like the page and half of just questions. And I just filled in everything else. I think moving forward, it would um probably be uh acting as a liaison between this board and the attorneys and probably communicating with Central Office if there's numbers or, you know, information that they need from Central Office.
I'm definitely open to helping, you know, I mean, not just.
Yeah, I just, I'm looking at it if, I I'm just, again, myself included, you know, thinking of just what my fall was like and then what last week was like for me. And then this week also, like adding more meetings, going places or doing things, isn't, isn't really an option. So if I commit to this, I wanna make sure I commit to it, but I'm not going to commit to going places and doing things. I can't take time off for work for this. I can't do that. So so that would be something that, you know, if we're gonna commit to it, what is that commitment going to be?
Yeah, it's understanding, yeah, what we have to do.
I know they've had one meeting, an initial meeting, um that, and I'm not sure if anybody from our SU was.
I think Bob.
Did he go? I'm not, I don't know if they're gonna have more meetings or if it'll be done over email. But I think that we could, you know, we're still part of Franklin Northwest, so we could be communicating with Franklin and as a part of it and Hygate and maybe between the three schools sending, so you know, somebody to represent.
Do they do any of these meetings like webinar type or are they, any of them?
I think that it was just an initial meeting to to meet the attorneys.
Like a kickoff?
Yeah, yeah.
I think really, they're looking for someone to communicate with. And if they need some data, they can't really come to me.
Right.
Because they don't work for me, right? So um they would have to say, gee, Sean, can you find out what your enrollment's been? I don't, I'm making it up.
Yeah.
And then you ask me and I can get you that.
I I, just knowing the spread of the schools, I mean, it's from the top of state to the bottom. So I can't imagine that there's gonna be a lot of in-person. I think it'll be done over email and.
I saw Washington County, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I can't imagine you're gonna get together for a meeting.
Right. I'm open to sharing responsibility as much as, I mean, if we're gonna do it, obviously, we have to have something in place.
Well, you're also a three-person board, so it's not like you couldn't have two emails going to David Kelly or.
Yeah, yeah, and I think that, I mean, we'll all be in this Google group.
The big group.
Um it's just having that one person who they can reach out to and say, we need this information or this is the update that we have for you guys, um so that they're not having to reach out to everybody.
Right.
Make sense?
Well, I would say the 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 legal fees piece definitely alleviates concern, especially considering, I know, Brian asked, but was Kelly the one that was quoted in the seven days article?
I think he's been quoted.
Cause he did make some comments initially of the task at hand of going after the state, which realistically was it's an uphill battle.
Yes, it is an uphill battle, that's for sure.
Putting it nicely.
But going, like you said, going pro bono with the whole thing, that speaks volumes too, at this point, so.
Yeah, I guess you can read us that motion.
Okay. So um you'd wanna make a motion to authorize the board chair to sign the letter of understanding and engagement to join the appeal of the State Board of Education's final plan as potential plaintiffs.
Still potential?
Yes, because we haven't made, they haven't made the final decision.
Oh, okay.
Still provisional.
Also, would they need to make another motion once?
No, you can just get rid of the word potential and just say plaintiffs, should the lawsuit go forward.
Will you reread?
If you can read my writing. It's at the bottom with the little stuff.
So I would like to make a motion to authorize the board chair to sign a letter of understanding and engagement to join the appeal of the State Board of Education's formal plan as plaintiffs.
I will second that.
Any more discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
And I guess if you wanna put me down as the contact person, you can put me.
I will send any email from tonight and just CC you.
Give her Fairfield's phone number.
And I can read it, huh?
Yeah.
Four and we'll figure out a system of who can tackle what and when and how and all that.
Julie, do you have a scanner that you could?
Absolutely.
Or would you like me to?
I'm happy to do it for you and email it to you. I can scan it, email it to you, and then you can forward both things to him.
Okay.
If that's how you'd like to do it.
I can, I can scan it then, you don't need to do that. That way you don't have to spend the time doing that, I have scanner. I just didn't know if it needed to come, but I guess it would need to come from our board, not us here, so.
Right.
Okay.
I don't think I'm going over any lines by emailing you.
Was there anything else from Act forty-six?
It will be old business for quite a while.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You mentioned like the information, I mean, any information here is public information. So whoever can get whatever they want. It's all public information here, right? Except for the personnel policies.
You mean the attorney could get whatever they? Yeah, I think this is so that they have, that the attorney's not having to call every different, all the different schools, right? If they have one person at each school who can do that for them, sort of lightens that up.
With me, they can ask how much everybody makes and everything.
Yeah, sure.
Downline.
Yep.
Well, it's all public information, so.
Yeah.
Well, as far as they can, they can get it themselves, but.
Yeah, I think it just makes it easier to have one person from each board or constituency um help them do that, so.
Send them the book.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so new business, you have a negotiations update. However, is a possible finding for executive session?
I I mean, I think in open session, it's fair to say that you had a meeting. And then if you wanna discuss the outcome of that meeting, you'd wanna do that in executive session. Because premature public knowledge would put the board at a substantial disadvantage.
Yeah, um so I went, I did attend that meeting a couple of weeks ago and I I think it would be good to give you guys an update um on that piece, so. Do we want to move that to the end and do Christie's report now or?
Yes, you would move that at the end. You'd just make a finding now that when you come to executive session portion of the agenda, you know that it's appropriate to so.
Okay. Do we need a motion on that or? We don't need a motion on that at this point, right?
Usually you make, you should make a motion on a finding, yes.
Okay.
All right, I'll make a motion to uh have the negotiation update during executive session.
On second one, oh, sorry.
Well, premature knowledge, blah blah.
I see. All right, all those in favor of moving the negotiating negotiations update to executive session, where premature public knowledge will clearly place the board or other parties at substantial risk, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Christie?
So this past week, we had both Megan Gargano and Samantha Kelly from the autism team at NCSS who came and did a presentation for our staff. Um they also did a presentation for our second grade. And they talked about autism and what it is and how, how, how someone with autism thinks differently, how the um, how their brain sends um, sends things down the pathways maybe in different ways so that uh that a friend who has autism may not perceive things the same way or may have things that bother them in ways that may not bother um someone else. Uh they did a great job with um the second grade. The kids had really fantastic questions. They showed a video, they played a couple of games, um they read a book. So they did a number of different things. The kids had really great questions. Um I joked that there was um, you know, perhaps a budding neuroscientist in the room because he was really wondering about um, you know, what happens in the brain and how that works and how the brain knows where to send things and what causes some, someone with autism to have it go off track. And so it it was just, you know, he was like, I really wanna know. Both Megan and Sam were like, well, I don't really have all the answers for you, but you should research that. Um and uh so they they did a really great job. Um they they took a little bit of a different approach with um the staff and they talked more about programming, the kinds of programming we do for um our students who um need to have different programming if they have autism and um why it is, why we program the way we do and um how it is based on data and observation and is looking at how um, what motivates kids, right? What the function of their behavior is. And um as I was sitting there and we had, we actually, for some reason, that particular day, we had a number of people out. We had a couple of people out, then we had a few people who were um finishing up a class and they, so they missed this, they were here during the day, but they missed the staff meeting. So I took some notes so I could give that to them. And um I realized that we actually hadn't done anything since I've been here for the staff around um, around autism or around like the functions of behavior and that I, that, you know, antecedent um behavior consequence loop and and what that means. And so it, we've done it three times for the, since, just since I've been here. We've done it three times for our paraprofessionals, um but not once for the staff. So I was like, oh, I was looking around the room, I was like, there's, there's, there are people here who've never heard this before, right? So it was interesting and, you know, we'll dig a little more and see if people need a little bit more to really kinda understand that um behavioral loop and um and how we sometimes um uh seemingly reward behavior um that we don't want because we're giving a kid something that they actually wanted. And yet we didn't kind of make that, you know, make that connection. Um so I thought it went really well. Um I was happy we had had that um happen. And um for our students, um particularly our second grade students who have autism, we had gotten parental permission and they really were very grateful that we were doing some, you know, community building and and some understanding around it. The theme for our December celebration of learning is family game night. Parents who join us for that December holiday lunch and concert, you know, we we like to bundle in Sheldon, have lots of things happening at the same time, um so that we can get more parents in. And uh um so they'll come in for the lunch and concert and then they'll see a demonstration and um some, you know, kind of parental professional learning around um math and literacy games and how that could be something that the whole family gets involved in. Uh then they will um take away a game, a math and a literacy game for their students that day. Uh Joanna Gerose took students, it was kind of, it was two separate weeks, but she took um six or seven students down to the Getting to Y workshop, which that group looks at our um most recent youth risk behavior survey data and tries to make sense of it. Like what does this mean? What are our assets? What are the, what are the things that we need to work on and what kinds of things should we be doing um in response to that? Um she also took three girls to Lake Maury, um to the V cap conference, Vermont Kids Against Tobacco. And um a group of middle school students are interviewing Senator Leahy tomorrow through. Um, through Skype, I don't know if it's actually Skype, but a version of Skype. About his, they have been, they've been studying government and government structures, so they're interviewing him about, um, what, about his role as a senator, what that means and how that, um, is, how that is supportive and, and, um, and how he advocates for Vermonters. So that should be interesting, there's about eight of them. Um, they had to send their questions in, in advance to Senator Leahy's team and they were, they were all approved, so. Unless someone goes rogue, we'll.
We'll be all there.
Hear about that. Um, they're doing that for that, uh, so that's, that's kind of exciting. Our instructional coaches, Lori, Yeshua and Leslie, um, along with their SU colleagues, um, from the other schools, are putting on monthly workshops, uh, and these are, um, these are voluntary, they are three thirty to five, I think, um, three thirty to five, once a month. And, and to augment and support our professional learning around the instructional framework. So Yeshua and Lori are going to do, um, Monday, uh, January seventh and they're talking about, um, previewing new content, um, helping students process new content using questions and, uh, reviewing content. And then Leslie Rainville is going to partner up with Heidi Moser from the SU and they're talking about, um, helping students practice skills, strategies and processes, examining similarities and differences and examining reasoning. We're doing. Some work with our SU colleagues and, and the, um, those workshops move around from school to school. So MVU had the first one, um, Highgate has one coming up, then there'll be one here and so uh, teachers sign up ahead of time, it's part of their, um, professional development hours that they can, that they have to have for every relicenter. Sheldon has been invited to, um, Rise Vermont's Rising Tides Award Ceremony and Dinner. Not, not the entire school, but all the teachers that have, um, participated in Rise Vermont. I spoke with Betsy Fournier, um, this afternoon when she was here and she's like, how many people are coming? I'd really like a lot of people coming, I don't think a lot of people are coming, but, um, I apologize to her, but I am going and, um, because I got kind of a little like nudge that we're getting, you know, at that.
Oh, wow.
That award ceremony dinner, so I will let you know. Northwest Technical Center that, at BFA is providing all the food, they have quite a lovely little menu, so. And mocktails, there's a little mocktail hour.
Oh, wow.
How cute.
Very elegant.
Yeah, yeah, it's at, um, City Hall in St. Albans, so. Yep, um, there's, uh, like I said, a lot of the in- invited, uh, Sheldon, people are not going, if any of you would like to go, let me know, I can get you on the list. It's Friday night, five o'clock. The PTO Holiday Gift Drive has begun, um, Sheldon does a really amazing job with this gift drive and lots of kids have, uh, happy Christmas mornings because of the hard work the PTO does. If you're interested, you can call Dawn, she'll get you on our list. Between February, and this is just a, I, I just wanted to let you know this. I don't know, I guess I would just call this an update, it's nothing to be excited about, but or, or at least maybe I should try to change my perspective about that. Between February and the end of May, Sheldon students will be participating in, um, NAEP, the Youth Risk Behavior Survey, Science SPEC, Literacy SPEC, Math SPEC and Fitness Program. We'll be, we'll be doing a lot of, a lot of assessment, um, for outside. We'll do, you know, we'll do our own too, um, but there is a lot going on. We got some good news and that was that there was supposed to be a, um, a School of Culture Assessment slash Survey and they, they postponed that, but it was also going to be in May, yeah, May, April or May.
Yeah, let's fit everything into those two months.
Yeah, it really is, um, you know, and NAEP doesn't happen every year, but it's like oh, yay. But, so, so there's a lot going on, uh, especially in April and May. And then, um, lots of events coming up, um, including our, um, December twentieth celebration of learning that I just mentioned and then the middle school, um, holiday concert the night before, on the nineteenth. Oh, and picture retakes, we just got our pictures back and December fourth is retakes, so. That was the big question on Facebook.
One of the retakes. Just get those pictures back and then.
Not what you all think. I know, I was like, oh, I loved that picture.
I know.
Alright, thank you.
So, um, just highlights from my newsletter, um, just wanna emphasize the amount of work that the HR department put into, um, not only switching from Datapath who is our third-party administrator and administrates the health reimbursement program, um, to a new vendor and, um, thank the SU board for agreeing that that made the most sense, um, and that would be healthy dollars. That was a big piece of work, but then came open enrollment where all of our teachers and support staff uh, are, uh, having to go through this new process again. Not that you don't do things every year, but looking at our health reimbursement accounts and, um, the other options that we have to everyone and they did a fabulous job, they did a roadshow, they had, they came to every school. I came to as many of them as I could, I did come here in Sheldon, I particularly wanted to come to Sheldon because of the closeness of the State Board meeting, um. So it was, it was, um, it was wonderful, teachers were just so pleased to see, um, options in a company that will, um, have good customer service and there's a person on the phone when you call and, uh, things like that. Some schools even applauded the health insurance presentation, which was surprising to the company because they've never been applauded.
Tells you how, tells you how things had been going.
Exactly, it spoke volumes, it really did. I wanted to just speak a little bit, we've been talking a lot about Act forty-six. I have had a tremendous, um, one of the highlights of being here in this supervisory union is a work with the administrative team. And, um, some of the work we've done so far, uh, is to talk about things like hazing, harassment and bullying, problem solve, uh, problems that have occurred, um, across schools, talking about, um, climate issues, talking about the inner, the, the initiatives that have been in place in all of our schools that are, um, best practices for meeting the needs of students who struggle. We're gonna be examining the new special ed finance law, um, that will be coming to, uh, I'll be giving information to, once Act forty-six stops, uh, I can give other information to the school boards. But the, the, talking about systems for kids who struggle is directly tied to the fiscal changes coming to, from the state. Um, which is not necessarily bad, it's just that things will need to shift. And why I spoke about, um, Act forty-six is that should we be merging? I think that group will be a very important group to be identifying, um, what are, what are the priorities, what are, what are the unanswered questions, what are things that we can do together? What are things that we can even just brainstorm about how maybe the two supervisory unions could work together around certain professional development, for example, we are being told to regionalize, so maybe that's something that we could engage the two SUs to have some continued or shared professional development if we bring in folks to talk about Marzano's and structural frameworks, you know, is that something that both organizations could share, so. I really just have a, a lot of faith in that group and their ability to identify and prioritize what I think would eventually end up being a multi-year plan for the district. I also was gonna just touch on from the, you, you stole the thunder about there not being a climate survey. I know, that was so exciting, um.
I got to take it off my report.
Yes, but I get to add that we are having an integrated field review after all in the spring. And I feel that there's something for the viewers on TV, there's something called a doodle poll, which sounds ridiculous, but it is a way that multiple people can pick dates so that you can schedule something. So I, um, finally, uh, went in and put in dates that would be acceptable and the range of dates were from March through May. Tried to pick everything in March and April that we possibly could do so that we stay that in May, but all of it would be terrible. But people will, people, if, if everybody's testing when they come through and visit, then everybody's testing when they come through. It is, it is what it is, so unfortunately, um, that was rescheduled, we'll see what happens. And I guess that's all I've got. If you have any questions.
I'm sure when we get closer to, um, organizing for the integrated field review again, I just shared that with my colleagues that, um, depending on the merger piece, that I may or may not be the most appropriate choice to be on the, um, IFR team. And, you know, if I don't, I don't know, no one jumped up and said, oh, please let me.
I'll do it, I'll do it, yes, I know.
Because the information is given as an SU, not as an individual school, um, but I, you know, when we get there, we get there. If no one wants to do it, I'm happy to go through the process because I think it's valuable, no matter. But if someone else felt like they would prefer to have a FNWSU voice, maybe? I would be happy to step aside as well, so either way.
I wouldn't be surprised if nobody steps forward.
I didn't, I mean, it was silent when I said that, so I didn't, I didn't get the sense that there was anyone who was like, please, please, can I go?
I've been dying, chomping at the bit, yes, no, I didn't see that either. Where were you going to be going as a visiting professional?
Uh, we were going to Maplewood. I was going to.
Yes.
I was going to Maplewood.
Okay, so future board meetings are next, uh, well, we have Sheldon bond discussion tomorrow at five thirty. Um, our next board meeting is December eleventh at five thirty. And the next Franklin Northwest Supervisory Union Board Meeting is December fifth at six thirty at Highgate.
That may be, and that may be, um, changed. Because Laura and Becky are at a state mandated, sort of, um, it's the training for the new financial software. And it's.
Converting our chart of accounts first.
Converting your whole chart of accounts, so two things. And they'll be, how many days will you be there?
Three. And it's four of us actually going.
Four, in Kellington, so they can't drive up for the meeting, but it is a budget discussion night, so, um, we're, we're looking on it to see if we can make that change, so we'll see. If we can't get a quorum, we'll just make do.
So our last piece is an executive session for, um, a negotiations update, um, which we've already found to be appropriate.
And possibly, um, facility contract discussion.
Yes. So I will move us into an executive session at seven seventeen.